I have a plan to do that.
There isn't a plan. Most of the grandfathered ones don't have a plan.
Right, but they'll have to produce a plan.
Have to come in at least tell the regulator.
Just come in and say that we're gonna stop stopping now, we're gonna save this part, we're gonna slope this part.
Yeah, and what you're gonna wanna do is make sure that the slopes, if you look at the 155 E5, it's very minimal as far as what the standards are, and it's basically saying except for rock ledge, you know, all areas affected by the excavation otherwise stripped vegetation shall be spread with topsoil or strippings if any, but in any case covered with soil capable of sustaining vegetation. Shall be planted with seedlings or grass to prevent erosion, okay? And then it talks about slopes, all slopes except for exposed ledge shall be graded to a natural response from the type of soil for which they are composed. So you don't want erosion, okay? Might wanna take a walk out and say, alright, you know, what are your plans for here? And you say, well, this might be a problem area over here, this is what we would like to see, okay? Now, if you're gonna continue doing your, you're gonna stop excavating on your property, but you're gonna continue using it for your hauling in and processing, then that would be like an exception, you're saying that was an existing use. And that's where, you know, I said that I'm not stepping into that. So if you say, well, you can continue doing that, if you're using that entire area, well, that's good. Maybe if areas that aren't being used, then it may start a natural reclamation by itself. But if you just stop and you say, I'm done, I'm not hauling anything in, I'm not hauling anything out, I'm done excavating, then there's 12 months in which to reclaim that property.
So, yeah, I mean, without making it complicated, you need to, any slope you have, you need to retain it. One way or the other, with a retaining wall or a decent slope depending on the soils, decent slope to limit erosion. And the other big thing is you either need to limit or eliminate runoff.
Correct.
So, for example, in my, where my pit is, going, when you get to my pit, the ground is, I'll just say, zero elevation, and then I go up a driveway that's 14 feet high, and then I go down into my pit. So nothing ever comes out of my pit except for what's on that driveway, you know what I mean? So I've retained all my water within my bowl, if you wanna, if you wanna call it that. So in my, you know, I mean, you could get, you don't have to get too complicated with the retaining of the slopes and messing that.
Whenever soil's different.
Yeah, I mean, sweet ferns will grow on sand.
Right.
The other issue too is typically when we were doing the engineering and the stuff, it was natural angular proposed or less, so when the sand comes down, if it comes down naturally, you don't want any straight slopes, they're gonna collapse and kill something. So if it's natural angular proposed, just like you're getting up the road right now, or less, then it's considered safe, cover it with something that'll, some growing medium, and get it to sprout, and it should maintain itself unless there's obviously a water coming in on erosion basis.
What's supposed to be considered a decent slope, a two to one slope?
You know, it depends on the soil type.
That's natural, like a sand, natural angular proposed.
It could be, you know, three to one, typically it's two to one, you know, one to one is not acceptable. But it's, like I said, depends upon the soil types, just what you're gonna have to do. And the height of the, of the base, depending on how far out you have to come to achieve that, so.
Yeah, I just, so basically what you're saying is that unless they cease operation of the area, they don't need to start.
Within 12 months, we have to reclaim it.
Right.
Or, or do your solar farm.
Change of use.
But if they're, if they're using it, if they continue, if they cease the use as an excavation area, cease that use, but they're using the property as, for like construction, uh, contract yard activities, they don't have to do the reclamation within a year, correct? They kind of postpone.
The slope should be done.
This is, this is what you guys are, are working on.
So the board needs to have a further discussion, is what you're saying, as to how to proceed?
Yeah.
And what we require, okay?
And if that, my suggestion would be that if that activity had not been occurring before, then it doesn't begin to.
Begin now.
Begin now.
Yeah.
And again, remember, on 155 E5B, there are exceptions, so if they decided that we're gonna just start a bulk, a bark mulch business in this area, they could come before the planning board and say, it's perfectly level, you know, I've got slopes up in here, no one's gonna hear us, no one's gonna see us, and this is what we wanna do, is do the, you know, the bark mulch. That would be an exception from the reclamation because they want that level area to stockpile the bark mulch. So there are exceptions that can be incurred and granted.
I mean, the real intent of the reclamation is, one, safety, two, erosion and water, you know, you know, water issues, so you have no runoff, no pollution, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, that's, it's stabilized from a, back to the point of primarily safety, obviously, on steep slopes.
Yeah, just let the nature can take over and, and it would stay.
All right, well, that's good. Thank you very much for coming.
We only, after looking at your ordinance regulations, the only question I had, which you may wanna double check on, is in the last part, under part 11.11.5 Appeals, it talks about any person affected by the planning board's decision may appeal to the zoning board of adjustment. And any appeal of a planning board decision under this chapter, under 155E, is appealable under 155E9, which is appealable to the regulator, not the zoning board of adjustment.
So they would appeal back to us?
Back to, yes.
Okay, so we need to make that zoning change.
Yeah, because this, this is in conflict with the statute. And then the only other part is when you talk about a permit shall be issued for five years, and renewable every five years. It doesn't provide for a, 155E does not provide for a renewal process, but I would think that instead of renewable would be an update every five years, I think is what you want, basically. And renewable would be for like any bonding that you may have for reclamation, that you require for the reclamation. So you wanna make sure that the bonds are up to date for the reclamation, and the plans are up to date every five years, which would run with the ALT requirements. But renewable, as you hear, you say the planning board's site plan is valid for 25 years.
Correct.
So that's the expiration date. And what you want is just to have updates, new plans every five years.
See, we issue a permit with a number on it, and every five years I issue a new one. And that's when we get to go see what has been going on and all that, that's where we get that way.
Renewable is just kind of a, so.
Change language is what you're saying.
Yeah, the reason we, the other reason we wrote that is in case five years from now, there's an entire different body of people on the board, that the next board couldn't just go out and say, well, we're not gonna allow this to continue. In other words, it was grandfathered in a sense that once you were excavating and you were in compliance, that somebody else couldn't come in and stop you, was, I think, why we wrote it.
Yeah, this one has to do with a permit, though.
Well, that was, that's what I mean, when we permitted it, the idea was five years down the road, somebody couldn't come in and deny you a permit. I mean, how did, how did other towns treat that?
Well, when you say it's renewable, that's when they could do something about it. If you said a permit was good for 25 years, the permit expires in 25 years.
Yeah, and review down, review in five years.
Review and updated plans every five years.
Right.
But not, not renewed.
Right.
Updated instead of renewed.
Plans updated, updated plans and review.
Right, but that's how that got rid of us.
And if there's a change, then we have to make an application.
That has to go through the, the hearing and everything, that's part of the statute.
Great, thank you a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mary.
You're welcome.
All right, so we'll go back to approval of minutes of March 8.
It's a good one, good stuff. Don't take it personally.
So keep this. There's gonna be lots of questions.
Mary's having on the board for a while, a new chair.
Riz, have a good night.
He just maintains a little pro- typically helps state, right, make up.
See you, Joe.
See you, Joe. All right, the only thing I have is Gary, it's Gary Mott, not not, M-O-T-T.
Oh, Mott?
Yeah.
No, I don't know, he's not from here.
I'm just saying.
M-O-T-T.
M-O-T-T, yeah.
Oh, no, I gotta go get him out of the, the contract, I made copies, I just wanted it.
I have a copy, yeah, a copy of.
Oh, yeah, I have that.
I did not staple these, it's in here, but.
I have a copy.
Yeah, I didn't know who might have, might not have printed about, so here's. I do have one question for you. Who's the chair now?
Me.
Okay, I thought that would've changed, 'cause she got this back in March, so I assume. So we just need to, that's one change we need to make, is the chairman. It says Lloyd, 'cause he was the chairman, so. So if you could just move over that super quick, I'm thinking, alls I'm looking for is just, you don't even need, I mean, if you want motion, Tony should have a motion. Just to forward it to the board's selectmen for approval and execution.
And what are we doing that's different than before, just extending?
We're extending it, because the deadline was April 30th.
And we need to stay right there.
Yep, well, yeah, the cost is the same, it was just, the deadline was April 30th, and with Mike leaving and Susan coming on.
Yep.
So we extended it.
September 30th.
To September 30th, yep.
If you need a motion, I'll make the motion.
Okay, thank you. Lloyd to Bill. All right, good. So I will, um, forward this to Karen once I receive the corrected last page, and then ask her to put it on the board's left-hand agenda. Okay.
We can do that one day, for sure.
Yep, if I get it by then, but yeah, which I should, today's Thursday, and she leaves this stuff by tomorrow, okay? So she knows it's coming?
It would be helpful, yeah, you can just shoot her an email.
Okay.
Does she have this contract?
No, because you hadn't approved it here yet, so I wasn't gonna give her something that we had forwarded. So Tony made a motion and Jack seconded, and we're gonna change Lloyd to Bill.
And that's it?
Yep.
All those in favor?
All right, so, LFT Property Holdings LLC.
Yeah, which is what I'm gonna speak to, actually, so, a couple of things real quick. Steve Wingate felt that, for some reason, he reviewed the natural resource chapters one more time, just like a month ago, and felt that he, there was one area that could've included a little bit more information. So I actually have a revision to that, I need to incorporate it into it, and I'm just gonna snip it, like snip that part for you guys, so you're not reading the whole chapter again. So I will incorporate those and get them to you for the next meeting. The milfoil?
Yep.
So I, um.
You're ready for it.
Well, I kinda went over you, not over you, but what I did was I went to the town reports, and I've compiled all the information from the milfoil, 'cause why recreate the wheel? And I also took information from the joint milfoil board.
Yep.
So I'm gonna combine all that, I've got it all in paragraph form, I just need to make sure things are flowing, and that should be ready for review two weeks from now, so if that's okay with you?
Sure.
Kinda went and did it. If that's all right, unless you have something else to add, but you wrote them, so.
I may have.
Yeah, you did. Well, well, you know what I mean, your name's on it.
All right, if you wanna just email me that piece and.
And have you proof it first, yeah.
And then.
Perfect, okay.
I promise I'll, I'll get to it.
Yeah, no, so if it's okay, the board approves me to go ahead and try to write the section, so that's close to actually pretty much being done, and then there was one more thing that actually. Maybe I wasn't. I don't know, I can't remember now, sorry.
All right, so next up is LFT Property Holdings LLC and LV Lot merger.
So, before we start, we, Alana Alby requested to have this put on the agenda, and she is not here. So I have not heard from her, I don't know if something happened, or if she forgot. But this should be tabled now, which will allow you plenty of time to read this and review it. And for those who weren't here, I think it was Bill and Matt, just, just wanna reiterate that it's privileged and confidential, so it only is in front of the board's eyes. The board can release it, but just needs to vote on releasing it to public. So, um, read it, and then at the next meeting.
Well, I think we should probably release it, I think the tranchitas should be able to see it.
Right, so that's, that's the discussion we should have tonight, is whether or not to release it, and if so, then we give it to them, and the tranchitas and Alby, everybody, and Alby has Attorney Marbury. He'll have a chance to review it.
Right, transparency, I think.
Yeah, just as far as the actual conversation, we were supposed to relay this information to them tonight. And with them not here, we should continue it, but.
When do you get this till?
4:30, so I don't want you to rush, but I would like you to at least read it and make a determination whether or not to release it.
Let it?
Yes. Because otherwise.
Any second? All in favor?
Aye.
I have to recuse myself of this question.
I think part of the issue here is, you know.
Well, you got a lot of issues raised in this letter.
There's, there's two and a half pages without giving an answer.
That's a bit.
And, you know, and I always appreciate with attorneys, when I, there's a lot of issues where they give me, this is what needs to happen, boom, 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 and that's not here.
It's our decisions, that's our decisions, our decisions, what you wanna do, it's not, this is what you should do.
But this is consistent with the way he works anyway. I mean, it is, he's a great guy, but it's just.
Absolutely, I'll go along with that.
Yeah, there's no limiting that, I have.
No. Billable hours.
Do you need a motion to table it, or?
No, we don't table the discussion.
No, table the, the.
No, we'll just continue it, you don't need to, 'cause it's not like a public hearing or anything. I just wanted to know whether or not we're gonna release it, so I could release it to all the board.
I mean, based on all the stuff in here, yeah, our ordinance has changed, so it can't be built out the way it is, so.
And then the big thing with the cluster was approved as a cluster, then by taking, removing that one lot.
Right, it takes.
How that changed the density.
Right. It probably helps the density out, because it's taken away from the density, and the common land still stays the same, so.
If they don't do something with that subdivision, that lot is really worthless. The two of them on the road, I'm not sure whether they're worthless.
He'd be better off sending out the subdivision, so.
Which you have the authority to do so.
Partially, I wouldn't make them do it all, but I would make them do probably partially, but.
Well, as old as the subdivision is, it's, it doesn't, wouldn't he have to go back to the state to?
Oh, yeah, you know, the state grounds and all that, place to get, redo all the engineering, because the road looks different now, if it's gonna be public, so.
Right. So basically, you can't sell a lot, because.
Right.
But it gives a lot.
Well, there's no bond. The body's gonna be done on a new engineering.
The town's been collecting money on it.
Separate lots of record.
No, we don't have the money.
No, it's been collected in tax.
That's, that's.
But I don't know if it's in current use or not, it might be, I don't know. Like, witness in current use.
Well, it's the same issue with that subdivision on the basin too, wasn't it? There were that massive.
Oh, yeah, the massive blocks, they weren't really there, yeah. It was all street.
All right, anyone have anything else?
So you're gonna let Marbury know and the tranchitas?
I will, um, yep, I have it electronically, so I will forward it to Alana. I do not have NISA tranchitas information.
Frank's filling out, right, you get it, oh, yeah.
Frank, I have little Frank, but.
I have either, I have both, so I'll get you his. I'll get you the email address, yeah, I have Frank's, anyway, so.
And of course, I'll CC Attorney Marbury as well, and.
I'll get it to you tomorrow.
And I'll let Roger know that we released it.
Yeah.
So that in case Marbury contacts him, he knows, and he can speak to it at their expense.
Yeah. I have both Frank and his number, I numbered it.
I'll get his email address.
Yep.
And this is his, that's Frank's number two.
Yeah, that's probably his, he'll probably, she'll probably just find it faster. So I just have, so Roger's been working on this for quite some time, this letter. So I have not provided him the information, 'cause we needed this sooner rather than later. So now, just to let you guys know, I'm going to now give him the Hunter file.
Oh, you haven't given him that?
No, he's been.
Okay, so that's.
Working on, I'm not giving him more than one.
So we have, we can't, we can't even discuss that, was.
Well, you can discuss it, but I don't have answers for you, 'cause he hasn't reviewed it.
The what file?
Oh, you weren't here, I apologize.
Did you read the minutes, the last part of the minutes this week?
No.
Well, this week it missed it. It was massive concern.
The minutes you sent out last night?
Steve had come back to the planning board and requested to remove the berm that is in front of the, and so forth. The concern I have is that by removing the berm, you're changing the way the zoning board would have weighed the criteria, the special exception, because it's no longer back behind a hill. It's now out in front of, you know, up on.
You wanna put a fancy little row.
Right, right.
It came to the planning board, I don't know, I was not that.
Yeah, I was at that meeting, or he came and talked about that.
So the concern is, you know, obviously, this is an contentious issue, and this, you know, one was heard by the zoning board, by one applicant, and then another applicant came, it had to be substantially different as being to the issues.
Yep.
Well, now, they're taking what, pacified zoning board and saying it's no longer there.
There were conditions that the zoning board put on it.
Correct.
And, um, I don't remember if the berm was one of the conditions.
It was not one of the conditions.
It was a condition, but it was what they were presented, correct.
So, so it certainly could've factored in their thought process and their approval, yeah.
Matt's thinking is that we don't have the authority to change what was approved by ZBA here.
Is if that's how they weighed it, and that's what was presented.
Which could, it could be, it could be liable from the original applicant. And I think that's what my concern would be.
Yeah, but, and I'm certainly not an expert on this, but, you know, it comes to this board for approval of a site plan, subject to conditions that are placed on it as it goes through ZBA. So I think the right thing to do is get an attorney to look through this whole thing. I agree with you, this is, this is what was presented, everybody says, looks good, make sure it has this, make sure it has that. So they wrote those things in, but didn't specifically memorialize some of the things they were looking at, if it's substantially, if, you know, and again, then it becomes, okay, is it a substantial change from what they looked at? Or is it?
It's a hill.
Huh? It's a hill, right, you know, yes, and so, no, I, absolutely.
The last meeting he was bringing up, building a picket fence.
Right, no, I was hearing when you talked about, about the fence for screening, and.
Yeah, it's the height difference, 'cause it stated it was only gonna be a certain amount of feet above the berm over there, so.
Yep, okay, that makes sense.
It's certainly be a good idea to have a attorney look at it.
Yeah.
But I don't know about Roger, I mean, that could take a while.
Well, a quick question, who represented, which attorney represented the town when the appeal, wasn't there an appeal? Oh, no, not of the Hunter, that was the.
He wouldn't, they wouldn't hear appeal.
Yeah, I'm thinking.
Right, right, and, yeah, and.
Special exception.
Attorney Sager was involved in any of the conversations that related to that.
Getting.
Yeah, they.
I'm just wondering if we should be asking Rick for the review instead of Roger, if Rick has previous, like, knowledge of.
He's not, that's not a planning board decision.
I know, it's, he's not planning board town council, I understand that, Roger is, but we have had.
I guess you could probably ask him the question, I don't know.
Yeah.
I mean, consultation commission is, Roger's their attorney as well, but they've had Rick Sager review things in addition.
You have two, you have two issues, you have, one, did the plan, did the zoning board, you know, did the fact that it was moved back behind a hill affect how they weighed the criteria? And then you have the second issue, issues, did the fact that it was moved behind a hill affect whether they would rehear the application? Because it's not easy to get a zoning board, it's not supposed to be rehearing an application. In other words, what they're trying to avoid is.
Substantial change.
What they're trying to avoid is people going back again and again and again and again for a variance for the same thing. There has to be something substantially different about it. So the question becomes, with the zoning board.
Well, and as I remember, one of the things that was different is the location on the property, because he had them right up by the road.
Right.
And I think there were more units under the Zimmerman plan, if I, then, then.
Yeah, they were horizontal and they were.
So, but you're right, you know, so what's, what's a substantial change, and where's the threshold?
You have two issues that he has to look at, you know, not to mention aesthetically, it's gonna be better behind the hill.
Absolutely.
If he strains it out.
Exactly.
I know, I know, the gate's still that up. Well, hopefully he doesn't, he's not using that, he's not in business.
I haven't seen anybody go up there, go that way. But you don't stand there. I'm not there every single day and every minute, so.
I mean, he's got locks, I mean, I took a ride up there a couple of weeks ago, he got locks on it, somebody got locks.
Yeah, he's got some stuff in his own.
There's four or five units that have locks on them.
So, yeah, what he says is his stuff sitting there, yeah.
All right, so will I ask Roger to review it, Leah?
Or Rick.
Or Rick?
Well, it's up to you guys, not me, what do you want me to do?
I hate to say this, but I would prefer Roger to do it, in my opinion.
Roger or Rick?
Roger, 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 he's attorney, and.
In not a roundabout way, have him give a decision.
Yeah. I know he's roundabout and he's not definitive, but.
He knows my.
Yeah, he knows, and, you know, most attorneys are like that, you pay him for billable hours and.
We're paying for an answer, basically, that's why. Not, not a disretention.
Yeah, well, good luck with that.
Yeah.
So I do have one question, looking forward, you anticipate moving any meeting dates in the next two, three months?
Oh, gosh, um, I don't.
And the only reason I ask that is because I work hard to plan when I'm gonna go out of town.
Yeah.
Around planning board, and of course, last month, when you moved the meeting, it moved it to the week that I was, that I tried to be out.
I know, but that, yeah, that was.
Well, but again.
We didn't mean to do that, no, no.
If we'd identified that the month before.
Yep, um.
So, there are gonna be times when we don't need to have a meeting because we don't have any business.
Well, we didn't have it, uh, unless you.
We didn't have.
Well, canceling a meeting, though, is better than.
That's right, right.
Changing.
Moving the meeting.
Right, is what messes you up, so, the only thing that I'm going to say is, I, I think that we need to, if you wanna look ahead, let's make a decision about the Fourth of July.
Until the fifth.
I won't be here on the twenty-first.
The fifth of July is a Thursday, so it's the holiday weekend.
I will not be able to go to that.
Yeah, well.
Well, it's, whether you can or can't, it just, let's just make a decision, I don't have any shit.
So, we can just forego having a dead date.
Correct, and that's, that's not, that's a work session technically, it's not a meeting, so if we have applications, we have the nineteenth.
Right.
So, you wanna cancel the July fifth?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll go along with that.
Sure.
So, um, I know that Loreen is back in town in May sometime, but I don't know when, so we'll have her back at the meetings, um, sometime in May, or maybe start of June, for sure. Um, I, I don't foresee having to change May or June's dates, if we cancel, that's one thing, but I don't foresee having to change them, and that was just, um, when is?
So July, so I have.
Memorial Day is the twenty-eighth, yeah, we don't even meet that Thursday, we meet two weeks before Memorial Day. And then summer, well, there's no real holidays except for Fourth of July. So, and, oh, and Labor Day falls on a Mon, well, it's always a Monday, on the third, but we don't meet until the sixth, so I think we clear.
That should be fine, yeah.
You know, so I think we're okay if you guys, when, when did you say you're not gonna be here?
Twenty-first of June.
Six twenty-one, okay, I know Jack, okay.